I mean, it sound, they sound like they're in New Orleans district from the way they talk. But I mean, I don't know, it could be somewhere, you know, above that. But I'm pretty sure that this one's situated in, uh, New Orleans. So here we go. Is that a good, is that a good, uh, volume? Too loud? Not enough?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
You're just a little old boy trying to do a man. You're not qualified to be sheriff of Lauderdale County.
Supervisor fight a major blow up in this morning's meeting of the Lauderdale County Supervisors between one supervisor and members of the sheriff.
That's definitely New Orleans.
On John Johnson, Lindsay is off tonight. We're going to begin this evening with a nasty personal fight that happened in the middle of the Lauderdale County Supervisors meeting today. Between District Five Supervisor Ray Boswell and Sheriff Billy Solly, along with Chief Deputy Ward Calhoun. It all started with a proposed switch in cell phone service, but it quickly moved from business and turned personal. Wade Phillips has more now in tonight's top story.
While supervisors were discussing the switch from AT&T to Cellular South, Sheriff Billy Solly came to the podium to address his concerns, requesting that any money saved be used to buy new cars.
You have bought us a car since 2004.
You've gotten along pretty well with that.
We're running out of cars.
After a brief exchange of sharp words about Solly's spending habits, the sheriff did accuse Boswell of using his county vehicle for personal reasons and witnessing him do it, which led to a long, angry exchange between the two.
Look at those little beady eyes on that guy. I mean, are you guys peeping that? I mean, you see, you see what I mean, right?
Personal insults towards Solly.
Not him, the other guy, him.
You always have been. I've been knowing you since you was a little boy.
Little boy.
You're a disgrace. You always have been.
Thank you, sir.
A crybaby too. What'd you do when you retired from the city? You got up there and cried. You couldn't take it no more. Couldn't take it no more. You were so weak, Billy. You got, uh, people that sit by and adore you throughout the day.
At one point, Boswell even accused the sheriff of being addicted to prescription drugs.
What's wrong with that?
Later, Chief Deputy Ward Calhoun came to the podium to defend the sheriff.
Wait a minute, wait. What's wrong with being addicted to prescription drugs? Anyway.
To address something Boswell had said earlier in the meeting about some sheriff's deputies possibly getting a sweetheart deal on land owned by Supervisor Craig Hitt.
Who between you and I are the sheriffs since we're all so bad and evil and corrupt, who's ever been arrested for a felony crime?
Have I ever been convicted of?
No, sir. The question, have you ever been arrested? Go ahead, Mr. Boswell. You don't know the answer to that one. You quit to talk earlier. Can you talk now?
I've been arrested a few times, but.
Yes, sir, for felony. This didn't like me standing up. Excuse me, Mr. Boswell, were you convicted one time? Yes or no? Yes, sir. Oh, you were.
I've never been convicted in a court of law.
You don't, sir. And in the future, I'm gonna ask that you not make comments about me or my family.
I've never left your name.
No, you didn't because you were scared because you don't have facts.
Hey, if you think I'm scared of you, you're wrong, big boy.
If you think I'm scared of you, you're wrong, big boy. I love it. I love this shit. I don't know about you guys, but I could, I could just, like founder, I could binge on this shit just because, because it's the public, but it's personal on a political level. And so, I mean, it affects everybody. You know, these people that go to these meetings are such busybodies already. It's like city council meetings, when they get out of order are so, it's like they add a new dimension of perspective to things, you know? It's like.
Is it me or is that thing cop out of pointy gear?
I don't know, but that guy's on point, man. He's, he's, uh, he's definitely on point, man. And, uh, he, he definitely had the last word on that Boswell guy. Um, I don't know what his problem was. Sounds like he's out for everybody's, you know, ass, but, um, let's have a deeper look into the profile of Mr. Boswell. Check this out. This is what he was referring to when he said, let's talk about felonies, you know?
The subtitles. I can't hear what's going, what, a meatball? What?
Yeah. Okay. The subtitles don't do it justice. They're getting it wrong, so.
Yeah, I can't make out any of it. Yeah, I can't either. I couldn't understand any of that.
Uh, something about bookie joints? Well, I wonder if that was part two. Let's say, we need to go to part one. Okay. This'll tell the story. Drunk and using racial slurs. Here we go. Tell us about it, Ray.
AK a typical Friday night.
All right, the subtitles are no good. They're asking him if he has a gun. I'm gonna close this son of a bitch tomorrow, he said, referring to a, a bar or something, I guess.
I heard homophobia, son.
He's, he's, yeah, he's, this is what the, the guy was referring to. He got, he got arrested for being drunk and disorderly, I think. This son of a bitch will be closed.
Sounds like the teaser came out.
No, that was probably, uh, that was probably the sheriff's office reaching their bandwidth for the, for the month. Oh, no. Of course not. All right, there's one more Ray Boswell clip when he's back in business at city council. Where is it? Oh, come on. There, there we go. There we go.
A heated verbal exchange took place at the Lauderdale County Supervisors' work session this morning. At issue was the authorization for city equipment to be used on private property in Lauderdale County. Stephen Bowers reports.
Louder or not, or too loud?
That sounds okay to me. Will louder.
Ten miles maybe down the road. Hey, I was born and raised out there. Don't tell me.
Supervisor Ray Boswell had a nasty exchange of words with a county employee. Boswell focused his attention on Lima Director David Sharp and at times, other members of the board.
You think you have more thought than anybody else?
The issue that started this argument was caused by the emergency actions taken to protect an overflowing pond back on March 9th. The pond was located on Meridian CAO Mark McDonald's land off of Highway 19 South. Sharp authorized the use of the city of Meridian's water pumps as a means to remove some of the floodwaters. District Three Supervisor Craig Hitt attempted to defend Sharp's actions, saying he followed guidelines, but Boswell felt the pond may have been pumped for political reasons.
Was that Lake Park just because it was the CEO of the city of Meridian?
Had nothing to do with that, sir.
As long as you pumped?
Sharp says he chose to pump that pond because of the damage floodwaters could have done to areas nearby.
The M and B railroad line, in my opinion, would have been in danger of being damaged. Um, Russell Camp, Rob Seid, any of the auction traders on Rob Seid, that may have, may not have been in danger.
Sharp says the bottom line is he followed emergency management guidelines and stands by his decision to pump the pond in order to protect roads downstream. In Meridian, Stephen Bowers, NewsCenter 11.
Oh yeah, check out this bitch. Picking on this poor old man. This, this is, keep in mind, this is happening in city councils and town halls all across America right now. And, and they all have their little backstories and their little histories dating back to the eighties, seventies, sixties, and, and all these little family feuds and, you know, all these different, you know, causes clashing. And, you know, it's amazing, you know, and some are more, uh, left dominated and some are more right dominated. And it's just amazing to watch, you know, how, how petty and how, and yet how resourceful they can be in fucking each other over, you know? Boomer. I'm kidding. I love boomers.
This one's less funny and more infuriating.
Yeah. That's the kind of bitch that like you, you, you just like stamp her forehead with, you know, defective, damaged goods. I mean, geez.
Yeah, the term for that is a Karen.
Is it?
Yeah, the bitch that, that is just like, no matter what, she's gonna speak to the fucking manager.
Well, here's what happens to, uh, her Ms. Griffin at a later date. Discuss removing Supervisor Christine Griffin. Aw. But she's more suited for the position, Brian. Come on.
Dear supervisors, please, please be advised that our regular meeting on May 6th to simple statement.
Like she's awfully quiet now. You see her choke back tears there?
Yeah.
It's as high as it'll go. That face says it all. What does that guy on the left look like to you? Because.
The dang son of the gun, right?
He, to me, he looks like he should model on the, for the front cover of a Richard Brautigan paperback. That's a really obscure one, but I mean, it, it, it came, it occurred to me that he would be the perfect, you know, uh, model for the cover of In Watermelon Sugar, you know, 2020 edition or something.
It's a great one.
Look at that twitch that guy has.
Frickin reptilian twitch.
Basically, she does resign, so.
Have you seen anything else with that woman or is that the only two?
Those are the only two. I'm trying to find, uh.
It's a slightly local one there.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for because, um, Doug Fleener, I don't know if you heard, uh, about him, but he, he, he caused a lot of drama uh, when he was on the Bristol, Virginia City Council, right?
Uh, nah, I don't know anything about that. Uh, similar topic. Have you ever looked at this, uh, I don't even know if it's still around, but that old site Topics with an X where people would just gossip about like anything related to the small, whatever small town. Each town had its own topics website. You know what I'm talking about?
Sort of.
Yeah, I've seen some funny things on there.
Member of Bristol, Virginia City Council believes an effort is underway to remove him from his seat. Doug Fleener is in the third year of his first term on city council, but he gained attention across the region for being among the whistleblowers who helped federal prosecutors take down several high-ranking employees at Bristol, Virginia Utilities during a years-long federal corruption investigation.
I actually found this guy pretty compelling when he would argue with him.
Spoke with Fleener today, who said he believes his outspoken personality is prompting backlash from fellow council members.
Outspoken personality usually just means asshole. Asshole doesn't know when to shut his mouth.
After his fellow city council member took the first steps towards ousting him from his seat one year before the end of his first elected term, admitting he's not perfect. The most recent example coming two weeks ago, when Fleener raised questions about a pay raise for the city's chief financial officer.
Is public information. It is not private. You just said, sir, I want the information. I want the information.
You calm down in these chambers.
Of malfeasance, neglect of duties.
And there's a couple of things I think I just don't want to talk about.
And he doesn't have to talk about it, according to city manager Randall Eads. A city charter requires the council to provide a notice clearly outlining their intention and grounds for removal. That same charter allows fired public officials to challenge allegations against them privately, away from the critical eye of voters who elected them.
If you're elected at any level, you need to care about the people, not your paycheck, not yourself, not your business, not power.
And Fleener told me today that it was quote unlikely that he would challenge any decision by the county.
I like the look on her face right before I cut, I cut back to her. She was looking at it like, what a crybaby.
But, but I actually like that guy's arguments, you know, when the, uh, here's the one of him getting a bit more aggressive.
He had thirty-some million in debt because BB, you took, let me, no, let me, let me, no, no, no.
The size of that gavel. Fuck you. That thing is huge. Looks like Thor's hammer.
I gotta see that again. That's.
Fuck off.
Look at that. He, he wielded that thing like Mjolnir, like in the hands of Thor just then. Did you see that? The force, it's like there, he got some like hang time on that, some velocity. I mean, you know?
I'll come over here with this gavel and I'll beat your ass.
Don't you ever bang that gavel on me again.
Get y'all bang this gavel on your fucking forehead.
And you can sit here and you can budget all you want to, and you can bang that gavel till the cows come home.
That was last week's meeting in Bristol, Virginia. City leaders meeting again tonight, where they hope things will go a little calmer. Last week, things got heated when Councilman Doug Fleener on the left brought up the city's $20 million debt. He says it's caused by retiree pensions, but Fleener was cut off by the mayor for going off topic. Pension liabilities are expected to be on tonight's agenda. See, it, it's moments like that, that, that make me want to actually attend city council, you know?
And with my luck, if I tried going to guck at that, it, it would be like the most boring thing ever.
That's the risk you run with these things. However, if I were to attend a local city council, it would not be in Blountville or Kingsport, uh, or Bristol. But it, it would most likely be here because these people are fucking crazy. I would probably go to Mount Carmel, uh, nearby. Uh, near Churchill.
Okay.
You know, in our area, yeah. Um, man, I could probably pick any place in this video and it would, it would do, it would serve me well, but, um, can you hear that?
I can't turn it up. I can't hear it.
How about now?
Now. It's a little better.
Okay. Can you hear?
A little bit.
Barely.
A little bit better. I think it has to do with the, uh, the way it, um, the way it picks up.
Yeah.
Do I have any other comments?
Do we have any other comments?
Yes, yes, sir. Diane Broden, 144 minutes, Brian Blaine, that's all I'm gonna say.
What?
I would like to ask Chris a question, and I know you ain't gonna answer me. But sort of just like they, they say, you never answer anything. We can bring up anything that we want to bring up. Uh, you personally, how can you be, how can you feel like being, standing up top and being our mayor? When you've done things that you know were wrong, you've been caught in it? You're corrupt, okay? Well, that's my honest opinion, okay? Everybody's got an opinion, right? So, just like they said, this is most dishonest bunch of people running here on this board that I have ever seen and dealt with in my entire life. I mean, it's just the way it is. Why can't we all get along? Why can't you all do what we like things done? At one point, some one time, instead of beating around the bush, meeting together secretly. I mean.
Which council members are not supposed to do, by the way. I don't, I don't know if you guys are hearing this, but he said, uh, y'all are, they're meeting secretly. Council members are not supposed to do that. Can you hear what, what's being said?
Uh, kind of. I, I missed that and, um, yeah, that meeting secretly, that's, uh, suspicious to say the least.
It's probably the accents that, that are, make it hard to, is that it? So I've got the volume up pretty high on everything pretty much, so.
We're the one that fuck you, you folks into it. Now, as far as I'm concerned, I wouldn't vote for any of it. Right, except that right there. That's exactly right. That's the one I vote for. This town is getting such a bad reputation. People don't even talk to you about moving into Mount Carmel now. So, why, why be so grumpy? And, and not work for us instead of against us? And doing things behind people's backs? You know it, Chris, well, I do. Uh, when you gonna have to go to court in Tennessee on county embezzlement in West Virginia? Are you gonna be our mayor, L N or?
Embezzling.
Put you jailed or, you know, whatever.
Mayor's going to court for embezzlement, huh? Yeah, when you tip your hat like that, you know it's serious in Tennessee. Now, here we go. Here's the fireworks between these two, because look at the, look at the, listen to the bombshell she's about to drop. And I pray to God that you guys can hear it because it's good.
I didn't catch it. What did she say?
Yeah, I'm fast forwarding to, uh, the, the better parts, the juicy parts. Cause those ladies haven't been kicked out yet. That's what I'm looking for when they get kicked out. That's the exciting part. Here's where they get kicked out. All right, this is a good part. Alright, this is a good part.
Is there any further discussion? Further discussion? Uh, discussing administrator appointment? You know, I have sat up here, I have listened to comments about how this board communicates.
You can hear him, right?
Yeah, kinda, yeah.
I have sat back and watched this board become a great board. We're working great together, we're working with the community together. It is a city manager's job to work with his board members, work with his. Uh, have been presented a budget. That is roughly eight hundred thousand plus dollars in red before we even start cutting it on. No projects are loaded in on that, am I correct? It's his responsibility.
I mean, how can he be responsible for the dance?
I've got the floor, right?
Okay.
Could you step back, please? If you can't, please. Please step back.
Carl's girlfriend.
Alright, like I said, we've got a lot of cut in the day. I'm not sure if this town is ready for a city administrator.
I love it. There's the fireworks, they're coming. This video's going on Facebook, you know?
This has come up in the last two meetings. I'm not happy with the city administrator we have right now. And I am making a motion that we eliminate Michael House as our city administrator, and do I have a second?
I think we need to have some more discussion about this.
We have a second, we'll have more discussion.
Okay, I'll make this, I'll make the second motion for, to open it up for discussion.
I've got a second. Okay?
Okay, what, what I'd like to say is, I don't know.
It is difficult, this is our hard time, see? And right now, we have to live within our means. In order for this town to keep operating, we cannot keep adding on additional expenses.
Well, I pay twenty thousand dollars more on the animal control than when you had one, one full time.
Please step back.
Uh, we don't, can't do it, can you, honey? Your low down, remember who my son is? You remember who my son is? And he's bought drugs from you.
Did you guys hear that? Did you hear that?
Did she say he bought, uh, bought drugs from you?
Yes.
What did he say?
He said, uh, and he got drugs from you.
Oh, wow.
You know who my son is, and he got drugs from you.
Oh, wow.
Look how he just lets it flow off his back.
Like people are, Howard, they're just getting coffee and they don't care.
Fuck that, I want caffeine, man, you know?
Caffeine is an appropriate response to a situation like that.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's like, it's almost like grabbing for popcorn or something, I guess, in this situation, right?
I think Mount Carmel's in my future.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I hear that the, the council meetings there are often like that. And since they already ousted our, um, our resident Loki, you know, in Doug Fleener, maybe we ought to pay a visit to that Mount Carmel city council.
And I would like to see if there's anything crazy in the Newport city council. Now, that's where I could see it getting pretty heated.
Newport where?
Uh, in Cock County.
In Tennessee?
Yeah, that's the town I grew up in.
Well, let's see. Uh, something tells me, why, are they pretty, are they pretty backward there?
Uh, yeah. I mean, I don't know specific people in the town.
That's too loud, right?
No, it's good. Uh, it stuck.
I can tell in a few minutes, I can tell in just a few clicks if it's, if it's gonna be worth watching or not.
Second. Do you have a book? They are down.
I don't know, they sound pretty subdued to me, man.
Uh, they're overdue to a while.
Doesn't sound like it's, uh, gonna be worth a while. Okay, dude with the ponytail now in his forties, that, you know, that's not gonna be, uh, worth exploring. Maybe I'll, I'll, I'll look for that one another time, let's see. Uh, oh my God, there was a really good one with this guy that sounds just like Randy Savage in a city council meeting, but I, I gotta track it down real fast, hang on. Sounds just like Randy Savage, talk amongst yourselves for a second. Have you ever been to any city council meetings anywhere in, uh, in Iowa, Ben?
Uh, no, I haven't, I live in Des Moines, so, um, and the Capitol is like just right down the street from me. Uh, but I've never gone to, uh, any meetings there, though. Uh, it might be, it might be interesting, we have that idiot Steve King.
Now, who, what's, what's Steve King's story?
Uh, he's.
Would I have seen him somewhere or?
No, he's, um, uh, he said some pretty stupid things. He's, to give you an idea, he's the kind of guy who at his desk keeps a Confederate flag. So you, you're, you're a representative for fucking Iowa, you idiot.
Which has no history of such a symbol, right?
Right.
I don't, I don't, I don't know a lot about the Civil War, to be honest. I don't, I don't dwell on it like a lot of people on both sides do, so, um.
Yeah, I, I understand that, like, if you're actually like from the South, I kind of understand it, but if you're someone who doesn't, um, who is from a state like, I don't know, New York or Iowa, who has a Confederate flag, it's just, I, 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 I just don't know what to say. It's, it's pretty clear, you, you just view that as like a, um, as like a white person thing or something, that's the only thing, a conclusion I can come to.
Hmm. Okay. Maybe it's, maybe it's in Brighton. This is a good one, St. Pete in Florida, I think.
I'm not seeing any, like, movement on the screen, it's still stuck on like a frame.
How about that?
Yeah, it's there.
Can you hear that?
I can hear that, okay.
Look at that, that's in the night.
This deserves a replay.
It's weird, it's not playing for me.
Wait, what?
I can't see anything that's going on, I can hear it, but nothing's moving.
You're not seeing anything?
Yeah, it looks like it's frozen on my end.
I can see it.
Uh, I'll try refreshing, maybe that. What about now? Is it moving now, Ben?
Uh, it's still not, which is, I can still see the, uh, our, um, our icons moving fine, but the screen isn't.
Wait, are you looking on the actual StreamYard?
Yeah.
Cause it's moving for me.
It's weird, it's not moving for me.
So what happens is, this guy in the audience, he, this guy here says, city of fascists, the guy in the red shirt. Then somebody over here in a Hawaiian shirt that almost dresses like a tourist says, why don't you move then, you know? Then this guy turns around and says, hey, why don't you eat shit? And then the guy gets up, you know, he's clearly provoked now, he's, he's doing the whole, you know, put up your dukes, you know, thing. Okay. I can't believe I might not be able to find that, that one, uh, with the Randy Savage dude, cause that was the best. Is, is it moving?
What?
Is it moving now, by the way, Ben?
No, it's still not working for me, I don't know what's going on.
What the fuck, man? Yeah, that's, that's horrible. What were you gonna say, Zach?
What initially led you down this rabbit hole of city hall things?
Yeah, um, I think I was just looking for arguments online. And then I found this whole little world of, of city council fights. I found it over and over, you know, it's like one video led to another and, uh, and I just, you know, went with it. And you know how I am with rabbit holes. Yeah, I, I hate it when people, I used to have all these people that would, that told me, you know, like, in one day, I had a bunch of people tell me not to, not to, you know, go, get too, go too far down a rabbit hole of this or that, you know? Well, fuck you, I like rabbit holes, you know? I mean, that, that, that's, that just means that you're passionate about something and, and, you know, it keeps you sane. Uh, these people who say this, you know, are the same people who say that there's nothing suspicious about the, uh, you know, the official story of JFK. I mean, these are people that don't.
Yeah, it's really strange to me, like, that'd probably be a bigger topic, like just conspiracy deniers, but I've never, I've never understood why people get that mindset. But if you're denying something weird is going on, that you're like smarter, I just don't understand it.
Hmm, um. And, and it, it, yeah, it led me from one video to another and I saw, well, there, there's, it seems like there's corruption in every city. I mean, my God, you know? And, um, and then I, I started, you know, widening my search, you know? Okay, well, clearly there's, there's, you know, a few councils that are nasty around here, you know, and I'll try Connecticut, Maine, Utah, Colorado. And I found at least one example in every single one. Sure enough, um.
It doesn't surprise me and on some level, they, um, they have, um, more, uh, incentive to act that way because like, who pays attention to city council meetings?
Right, yeah, um.
Cause obviously if a fight broke out in, I don't know, the Senate in Washington DC, everyone would know about that, but if one breaks out, um, I don't know, in, uh, um, Fort Dodge, Iowa, nobody's gonna notice.
Yeah, I'm, okay, I'm getting closer to finding that one I was looking for, I know I'm in the right area. Um, you notice that this stuff doesn't happen at the higher level, like, it's not as, um, you know, out of control, which is, you know, which is strange, um.
Yeah, the few times it does happen, it becomes national news, so people have an incentive not to act that way.
Yeah, although they have, uh, they, they, they have gotten pretty ridiculous, you know, in the last few years. And honestly, I think that they were insane before Trump, uh, they were getting insane before Trump. Uh, we're talking about people who want to uproot the entire way of life and the entire understanding of, uh, baseline sexuality, and I'm not okay with that. You know, it's one thing you want to tell yourself that, that, you know, these things, gender relations are one way, but when you start telling me that I have to agree with you on that, you know, and, and, and fear away from how I've been raised, it's not happening, you know?
Yeah, I'm with you on that.
And I mean, I think that it stems from this, um, Common Core, where they want everybody to be teaching the same style, uh, across the board, right? What do you know about Common Core? Either of them.
I don't know much about it, um, I tried to look into it, but I couldn't really like find much information on some level, like the mathematics thing seemed to be almost a variation of the whole new math idea, which, um, was kind of ridiculous, I don't know if you've heard the Tom Lehrer song on that, um.
What is new math?
It's the, supposedly the idea of new math is, um, is that you understand the process of what you're doing rather than getting the right answer.
Wait, wait, what now?
It's, yeah, it's kind of, um, hard to explain, um, if you look at like the Tom Lehrer song, new math, uh, he like does a problem of it and, um, in song form, it just makes fun of it.
What, what is, how does, what is a, a new math problem, so to speak, I mean?
It would be like, um, so, so you have like a, uh, a three-digit number subtracted from a three-digit number, um, and like, uh, like they also would, uh, in addition to doing the problems, like in, I guess, base ten, like how most numbers are, they would do problems in things like base eight and so forth, which is something that I don't know why someone learning basic mathematics would need to know.
I don't know what you mean by three-digit, subtracting three-digit number from a three-digit number.
Uh, like a three, uh, like five, twenty-five minus three, twenty-eight, something like that.
Well, I mean, you can do that in regular math, though.
Yeah, it's, but they have a different process for getting it, like when you write out the numbers and then you, uh, like, okay, so you can't take five from eight, so you have to like, take this number and make it fifteen and do that, uh, they.
Why, why, um, why can't you take five from eight?
All right, you can't take eight from five, I mean.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I got that turned around, sorry.
I found the Randy Savage guy. Hallelujah. Tell me if you can hear this, all right?
Yeah, it's, the screen's still frozen for me.
But you can hear it, right?
Yeah.
I can't hear it.
Are you serious, Zach?
Yeah.
Can you, can you hear it now?
Yeah, barely.
She come to my pickup truck. I ain't worried about you. Tell, tell me you're hearing this.
Yeah. It's fricking awesome.
Came over to my pickup truck, I didn't go to her. I can take, I can, I'm not worried about you, I can pretty well take care of myself and you're a bitch. I'll say it like it is. I'll say it like it is. You're a bitch.
Sort of confused about the context, though, what's going on?
See, that's the thing, you don't need to really know the, the full context to enjoy these, just watch the, just watch the beautiful chaos unfurl, you know, um, it, it's like uh, it's like awakening a more petty Cthulhu, it's, I just like it for the sheer chaotic nature of it. You know, I can kind of fill in the blanks later, you can clearly tell who's the good guy and bad guy usually, that's another thing that's amazing about these, you know, um, the shades of gray are, are, you know, neutralized and the, the hero and villain are more clearly outlined in these and I, I think that's amazing, um, because a lot of the times it's just random people filming, it's not, you know, media, uh, casting one or the other as the hero and villain, it's, it's just, it happens organically, which is fascinating, um. Maybe I should write some kind of novel or anthology just about city council meetings, I don't know.
Kind of gonzo journalism.
Yeah.
Yeah, or like a uh, uh, a novel where city council meetings turn into uh, uh wrestling matches, or they basically are wrestling matches.
Or, or sword fights or something like that.
Yeah, you could combine your love of wrestling with this kind of thing.
Here, there's please city council meetings and laser tag come together.
Well, you can't get hurt in laser tag, you know, maybe if the lasers were real.
Real laser tag.
Yeah. Yeah, just actual like guns and swords involved. Just because, uh, you know, we're, we're the, we're already pacified enough, we don't need, we need like real weapons.
Yeah, what, 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 what was uh, what do they call that, the, the knife that's at the end of a gun when they get close enough and you're out of ammo, is it a bayonet?
Bayonet, yeah.
Yeah, laser tag guns with bayonets on them too, yeah.
Yeah, make sure you fucking keep your distance.
Yeah. So you really can't see that, Ben?
No, it's just like frozen on that.
Go to that link I sent you in chat, maybe, uh, in a separate, in a separate window, so you don't, you know, exit out of here, but uh, and, and Zach, tell, please tell me you can hear this, though.
Yeah.
Okay. Cause he's got a great Randy Savage voice going on, I mean, you know, clearly, you know, he's in the uh, early stages of emphysema, you know? Junkyard people, I think that's what he said, junkyard people, and look at that memeable face right there. He's getting out of frame, man.
Is that dude with the beard wearing pajamas?
I think he is, yeah. I guess that's where Santa spins. Pateloo, you're a fucking asshole. Yeah.
I can see it on here now.
Okay. Jesus, you're an asshole. You hear that, Pateloo, you're an asswipe, just like your son is.
Sniff it to this Slim Jim.
He's the soul bitch.
Agenda B twenty.
Excuse me.
Prior to going forward, since we've had, made it a, made it a uh, a possibility for speak, I'd like to speak. Um, because we've had this.
We're not gonna follow the agenda.
I do would like to make a statement.
We can do it, members of the board, if you'd like to, member did asserta just a moment please, if you'd like to make a statement, you're welcome to do it during board super genetic communications, but we're gonna follow the agenda.
I would like to apologize, member did asserta.
I would like to make a statement regarding the speakers.
We've, we've allowed this in the past, okay?
Member did asserta.
We allowed, we said we allowed this in the past.
Order, member did asserta, we're gonna go to item B twenty.
We have a little.
We approve budget.
I'd like to make a comment.
Member Davis.
I'd like to make a comment.
We're gonna follow the agenda tonight, item, agenda item B twenty, approve the budget revision, number one for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen presentation by deputy superintendent Kinto. Ms. Kinto, please come to the podium.
Ms. Kinto respectfully, can you?
Member did asserta, you are not in charge of this meeting, thank you very much, respectfully.
Ms. Kinto has to come to uh the podium now, she's been called on by the president.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment for our community.
You're more than welcome to make a comment.
I'd like to make a comment for our community at this time.
Member.
I want to thank everyone that came today and I would like to apologize. I would like to apologize if they feel marginalized and offended by recent publicizing laws. My dear town, I will work to make this thing still.
Member Davis, Jesus.
Ms. Kinto, please come to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you community for coming tonight, I appreciate listening to you, thank you.
You are not recognized, member Davis.
Deputy superintendent Kinto, go ahead.
Ms. Kinto, may I, may I, may I speak to you?
Out of order.
No, we're gonna start, we're gonna follow the order, thank you though.
Ms. Kinto, may I speak to you?
Mem, member did asserta, you're out of order, mem, member Kinto.
I would like to, please, I would like to. Members did asserta, I will, I would like, the meeting you'd like to know. I can stop the meeting if you'd like, it's not what you, you're more than welcome, this is not the view of those individuals.
Member did asserta, I'd like to.
We're not gonna do this right now.
Apologize to those members. Member did asserta, thank you.
I think I'm the only one on this board that is taught, we have a, we have a rule, we have a true order
and we're not gonna do this right now, but you're welcome to have comments.
Look, he's not giving up. I'm pretty sure her time would be up by now.
As Jen, Ms. Ms. Kinto will now.
We represent children in this effort.
Thank you.
Yeah, no shit, right? Are, are you guys still here? Did you abandon me?
Nah, I can't hear, I just, I just taken us in.
Appreciate you coming, I appreciate you coming to speak on behalf of the community to ascertain that all voices are heard and I'm very thankful for that, but I do not want to model for our community the sense of reality that we're experiencing right now. We have to have a model.
They're having annoying voices.
To care and conduct our business in a dignified and organized manner. I, I deeply appreciate you being here to speak on behalf of the community, um, but we can't have our meetings devolve into something that they are not be.
Thank you, Ms. Kinto, please come to the podium. We're gonna do uh.
He's not giving up.
Yes, would it be appropriate at this point in time to take a break or adjourn the meeting for a moment, um, take a break so that? Get.
We'll take a uh, ten minute break and come back and I have uh, we'll start the meeting back at seven fifteen.
That didn't take long.
Nobody should have ever extended their own turf from the deck up. They're sending all the power to the sheriff's system. Enough shit out. You have the people at your work, pet, for eight years. I'm grateful you're here now, so do it.
I'm not voting on turf. This is unfinished business, this meeting is yours. Do we have a vote? This is unfinished business. If, if you move on to this vote and we finish this meeting, if we move on to the vote and we, and you vote on it for some crazy reason, five people in this room, you ask her, I'm going to be calling night out, I'm gonna be working with the corporation council to verify if a four three vote is invalid as the judge says. If that's what's gonna happen after the meeting.
Have you guys heard of Eric Mays?
No.
Flint, Michigan?
Oh.
This guy's been arrested so many times at his own council meetings, it is impressive.
Is it supposed to be moving? Like, I'll be frozen.
He's what?
Is this one just audio or is it a video?
It's video, why is it not showing up for you either?
No.
Um, I'm looking on the stream and it doesn't seem to be going either.
I know what I'll do. Maybe I'll just, maybe I'll start over with it and that will fix it, and if not, maybe we'll move on and uh, go over a few other things and wrap this up, but uh, how much longer you guys got? Do, do you want to start heading towards uh, the finish line or you got a little bit more time?
Um, I got, I got time.
Okay.
Yeah.
If either of you need to go, you know, I, it's, it's not, it does not gonna hurt my feelings, you know, uh, I just, I just like to do this, you know, on Sunday, Sunday when I've got some time and uh, don't have to wake up early the next morning, so, but if, if you guys ever need to bow out early, you know, it's not gonna hurt my feelings, this, this is just a hobby, you know, so. Just a hobby, just a, just a side thing, but um, yeah, let me, let me try adding it fresh again and see what happens, what about now? Ben?
Um, no, no, nothing is showing.
Zach?
Nah, it's just black.
Okay, well, I'll throw in the towel on that, who knows what happened, but uh, anyway. It was fun while it lasted, I'm, I'm sure it'll probably work next time. I don't know. Wait, wait, wait. Okay, let me try one more time here. And, and just so I'll know in the future. Alright. Now?
Yeah.
Oh, it does, we working now?
Alright, so you want, you want to go for, with, go through with a few more of these guys?
Uh, yeah, we can do a couple more.
Okay. Think that's a good one. You're breathing, you're, one of you guys, one of you guys is breathing really heavy, are you okay?
Oh, sorry, I'm holding the mic too close to my face.
Oh, okay. This is the most dysfunctional council I have ever seen. There are so many videos of these people throwing things at each other, making threats.
Okay, I've got to ask you, what's that thing in the background?
What thing?
The big black circle.
It's like a table.
I think that's a table on its side, maybe?
Okay.
It's a, called a what, Ben?
Table.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's a table on its side, I think, um, this is the most dysfunctional city council I've ever seen, they throw things at each other, they've gotten each other fired, they threaten each other, they, they take each other's mail and then they, then, so they don't know what the uh, minutes are in the agenda for the next meeting is, it gets so petty and they fire people that are in each other's lives, they get people fired that like crossing guards and this and that, it's crazy. This, they, they, one time they fought over uh, the air conditioning. When one of them had the air conditioning turn off, turned off so that the citizens would get hot and not want to stick around for the uh, end of the meeting. Where they were gonna be vote, voting or speaking about something really serious, so. This is the, this borough definitely wins craziest city council and you'll see why here in a minute, here we go. It's still, it's still, they're still moving, right, guys?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Ben?
Yeah.
There's a lot of them, you guys requested for a meeting.
Uh, they never had the meeting.
I know the meeting never happened, but why was only a select council people asked to sign this letter?
I don't know.
Four people wanted to have a meeting and the proper procedure is to ask the council president.
That's not the problem here, that's not the problem here.
We called this meeting for today.
Patricia.
Under advisement of John McLean.
I had a.
Which was supposed to.
The reason I asked, John, we went through this last week. These guys, these guys went on council. We had a meeting on the December thirty first at eleven o'clock in the morning. And we didn't have a call, so, so, the meeting was held at nine o'clock on New Year's Eve.
The reason we had to have a meeting was because, I understand, we need to adopt the ordinance.
Your meeting last year was.
Here we go. Sometimes they have little lulls that you have to fast forward through to get to the good stuff.
First of, man, we never needed any jobs in the first place, same jobs.
Well, we don't need this job either.
And you know what, maybe we, we could discuss that, Pat, but you wanna, you wanna, you wanna go against the simplest of little things, you wanna create an argument, Pat, and that's not my style.
First of all, Fred, no, how do you kick somebody that's already down here and don't start fucking kicking?
Who's that?
The part-time people, that don't even make what the goddamn crossing guards make and all you wanna do is cut them out, that's the crossing guards thing.
Crossing guards make.
I'm not talking to you.
Crossing guards, you can't cut the crossing guards out, you can't do that. Because the crossing guards gotta be there for these kids.
And highway don't, and reception is done.
We do not owe Tracy Bell living. Get over, and get over, it doesn't do his job. Don't look at the five hundred block, no, it's not personal, it's all personal, racial incident, it wasn't you.
Whatever.
Whatever I do I want.
Here we go. I'll bet you don't have any friends. Did you hear that?
That was kind of muffled, what did he say?
They wanted to keep a police officer who tased a guy in his jail cell with his handcuffs on. The guy was immobilized already and he still ta, and he still uh, tased him.
Oh.
And he, he was in a cell handcuffed and the guy still tased him and they wanted to keep him. That, that was a big uh, point of contention on this board one time, it, it's still, it's still going, right?
Yeah, it's still working.
Oh, that woman in the background.
You got a hundred and twenty thousand hours in the back. You used a police department, you used a police department to go against police opposition. Okay, but it is, you approved of it, you approved of it. You approved of it. Tell what, there's a fact, tell what.
Damn.
Don't you ever do that.
Just banging it like it's trying to bang the table in half.
There's only one person in the, in the audience. They barely have a quorum.
You can watch that, she's turning her head like it, it's just like she's watching a sporting event.
You, you have to have a quorum i- in order to, to have a city council meeting. A quorum is people who are there to witness. These people because they're not supposed to, you know, meet too much in public, you know, without. You know, people without witnesses, uh, i.e. a quorum. That woman, that one lone lady is the, is their quorum right now and she's married to one of the people on the council. Uh, so, yeah.
That doesn't look suspicious at all.
Right.
That, nobody just gives a fuck.
The meeting isn't even started yet, to give you an idea. They're trying to argue about starting the meeting, okay? Look how they all came together to speak the pledge of allegiance. I'm like, and then they go right back here. I never called this meeting to order. That's what you said.
With liberty and justice for all. Fuck every single one of you.
People have to get back to work, Patricia. I said, when John is laid, we wait.
I'm making a motion to appoint Paul Muser as president of Colwin Council.
It's a coup. It's a coup d'etat.
Patricia Williams. I don't know what the motion is. I haven't called.
To appoint Paul Muser as president of Colwin Council.
Look at that. There, there's, they're in the middle of a coup d'etat to overthrow that woman, woman at the end of the table because it's so vile and heinous.
Patricia Williams.
The water.
Have the sole discretion on whether you're gonna have the meeting or not. We're, we are scheduled to meet at 11 o'clock.
Okay.
And it's 11 o'clock, it's time to meet. If the majority of the council wants to commence with the meeting, that's what the majority of the council can do.
Okay, so they cannot wait for the two other council people. That's what you're saying, right?
Now, see, that's key because those two council people who are late are that woman's buddy. And so they're, they're gonna try to hammer it out and get this, you know, coup of overthrowing her, uh, from the presidency. You know, while, before they get there, see?
The majority in council, whether you wanna start. Or whether you wanna wait for any other council.
I mean, I followed this shit like, uh. You know, like, uh, days of our lives, man. I know the ins and outs of this borough.
Who's on the floor to appoint Paul Muser as council president? Jesse Brundage made the motion. Fred Lesher seconded. Patricia Williams, your vote? You're not voting? I didn't call this meeting to order. You're not voting? I did not call this meeting. Fred Lesher.
I'm voting, I'm voting for Paul Muser to be president of council.
Massa Kamara.
Not bad.
Jesse Brundage. Paul Muser. For.
Hear that? A, a secret meeting. They all do it. You know they all do.
One not voting.
Yeah. And like I said, they probably don't have to put up much effort because most, probably don't give a fuck.
Well, I mean, how do you reinforce that in America, really? The whole. Americans are not allowed, because they're on council, Americans are not allowed to speak to each other. That just seems odd to me, like, out, outside of it. It, it seems kinda like a slippery slope to me personally, but, uh, I understand the intention behind it. Uh, city council meetings are, are pretty much governed by this book called Robert's Rules of Order. And, uh, I've never looked at it, but, uh, all this stuff is, is stringently outlined in that, apparently, and that's what they're all supposed to go by, is Robert's Rules of Order. Um, I'm gonna wrap this up after, after this one, I guess, concludes. Uh, and I, I had one story and then if either, either you guys gotta, you know, uh, hit the road, I understand. Uh, but I, I didn't want to tell one story before we, uh, wrap up. If, if, after this, if you got, still got the time, right?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad, John. Four to nothing. Four, four votes.
What's four votes if you get?
One, two, three, four.
See, every one of y'all coming out with politics. Patricia Williams. Patricia Williams. You're not now behind the camera, council. Patricia Williams. We know she's here. Mr. Lesher. President.
Oh, yeah, I'm voting here. Yeah, I, I made that motion.
It was, it was made a second that we're having questions, right? And the public safety director. Police chief and public safety, yes.
Okay, you're gonna see in part two, the other kid, the, the, the two council members arrive. And find out what happened in their absence. She's saying you took a vote for me because they didn't get to vote, which she didn't take a vote for, but she didn't. They, they, they. They voted without her, basically is what she means, you know? So. You get what I'm saying? It's a new, it's, the, the, the guy on the other end of the table is the president now by this point. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Look at the unbridled wrath of this toenail prey girl. What were you gonna say? What were you gonna say?
Nothing.
Ben, what were you gonna say?
I, I didn't have anything to say.
Okay.
You take a vote. You did not vote. Did not vote. You cannot take a vote from me now.
Any more questions? I have questions on the motion. It has questions on the motion.
The mayor was part of this interview. Tell me, what did you read on any of that application? Who did the background check?
It was a joint committee.
Lieutenant Commander Chief.
Be quiet, this is a way to public safety. You be quiet or I'll have you removed. Yes, I will. Is it quiet?
No more questions.
Jerry, Jerry, Jerry.
Go ahead. Questions on the motion?
My question is. Questions on the motion? Who?
Yes.
Who?
Right.
Council's rights have been taken ever since this woman been at the table. We had a cop that was on suspension. He was terminated. He never came before a council. His status has been since he was suspended. It took. That's not the motion. That's not a question on the motion. You have a question? The motion is to hire a three police officer. Question on the motion only.
She can't be.
And three minutes later? Sorry, two minutes later?
That gavel's not stopping shit.
Two minutes later? She just called another, another black man a racist. How do you, how do you explain that? Because he was a part of the quote-unquote "secret" meeting or whatever. She called him a racist even though he's, the, the mayor was, is a black man. That's who she was talking to there. That, that's amazing to me. Whatever, yeah.
Wish the camera would move over.
What was that?
I wish the camera would like follow what's going on.
I know, yeah.
No, you know why? Because that's your enforcer.
No, he ain't. He's got bull shit in his back.
We, we don't play shame game. You play.
You're an enforcer.
Am I the only one that finds it odd that the police officers in these meetings? Like, maybe in other city councils, they act promptly, but the ones in this borough, they, they just stand there and take it all in. Even when they throw shit at each other, okay? How, I don't understand that.
Probably afraid to get in the mix.
I would be, but I mean, they're police officers. I think it's because there, there are so few of them in that department because they've all, they've all been fired, uh, and, and, you know, uh. Refused, uh, promotions because of how in debt, um. Um, and financially strapped, uh, the Colwin borough is.
If she does not. The motion, the motion number four, the money was used, the money we're gonna use is for the former Colwin Swim Club. Correct hazardous conditions at the former Colwin Swim Club by filling in pools. Erect fencing to secure the property, re-hack the existing basketball. Do we have a roll call vote? Discussion on the motion. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Watch that crossing guard, guys, as, as the, the video ends here. Keep watching the crossing guard.
Did he spit in that guy's face?
Either that. Or he just called him a bitch.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Called it, he said, "You're just a bitch", but he may have spit too, but by the body language, it kinda, it may have been, yeah.
Thought I heard him spit right after that.
So, I don't know for sure, but I'm pretty sure that, uh. He was one of the jobs that that guy wanted to eliminate, uh, because they mentioned a crossing guard. It said, "We don't owe Tracy Bennett, uh, living" or whatever. I have, I have a feeling that that was the crossing guard they were talking about and that's why he's so heated, you know? Can't blame the guy. Now, listen to what the fat guy says. I'll relay it if you don't hear it, but. Did you hear what he said?
No.
I didn't see nothing. I was sitting, I, I didn't see a GD thing and I was sitting right there. In other words, hey, if you wanna move on the guy, I won't say nothing, is basically what he was getting at. Alright, so I'll end it there. I thank you guys for humorin' me. Um, I did want to.